So where's your family reunion? Oh, nice. He needs resource update, I guess. Need a downtown consideration that's on the whole university list?
All right, let's call to order this meeting in the Sturgis City Council tonight, June 16th, at just before 6:30 PM, I think. Please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bill, are you willing to offer a prayer for us tonight?
Father, we are so thankful for the beautiful evening that you have given us and the beautiful Black Hills that we've been allowed to live in. And Father, now I just pray that your Spirit of wisdom come upon this council as they deal with the issues before this city, and we pray for the peace and prosperity of Sturgis. Amen.
Item three is approval of the agenda. I know of no adds or omissions. Is someone willing to make a motion on the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second. First by Alex, second by Jim, to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. We've got the agenda approved. Item four is announcements and praise. Councilor Thompson, would you read those today?
I'd be happy to do that. Bill Myros is going to be retiring from the Love Inc. that he has represented for so long, and his celebration is tomorrow at 4:00 at the Love Inc. building in Rapid City. So, Bill, thank you for all you've done. You will still be coming here, I'm trusting. Thank you, sir. Reminder that Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, Sturgis Music on Main features the Tyler-Bills Trio, starts at 6:00 in the evening at the Harley-Davidson Rally Point. Then this Thursday is the Juneteenth holiday. City offices will be closed. Thursday garbage will be picked up Wednesday, along with the Wednesday routes. Also Thursday, starting the 13th and running until Saturday, the 21st, is the My Fair Lady at the Sturgis Community Center Theater. That's at 7:00 in the evening, Thursday through Saturday, at 1401 Lozelle. Friday, the 21st, at 8:45 in the morning, Sturgis PD Police will escort Camaros from the Thunderdome to Fort Meade. 8:50 in the morning, the parade through Fort Meade. That's on Friday. And Saturday and Sunday, the 21st and 22nd, is the Black Hills Renaissance Festival. That'll be at the Kickstands Campground on Exit 37, south of Sturgis. Saturday, June 21st, Sturgis Outdoors has teamed up with the Black Hills Volksport Association for the Sturgis Volks March. The registration table will be set up at Lyons Club Park. Registration Saturday morning at 8 until 11, Saturday, the 21st. Sunday, the 22nd, Northern Hills Community Band will play 7:00 Sunday night at the Harley-Davidson Rally Point. Then next week, on Saturday, the 28th, the Sturgis Lions Annual Fishing Derby will be from 9:30 to noon at the Lyons Club Pond. Your kids go into that one? Possibly. Friday, June 27th, and Saturday, June 28th, that'll be a week away, is the Black Hills 100. It's a challenging ultra marathon held on the Centennial Trail, Trail Number 89, in the Northern Black Hills. The start is in Sturgis. And Friday, July 4th, will be fireworks at the Sturgis Fairgrounds at dusk. So those are the announcements that I have.
Thank you, Jim. There's a lot going on. I'd like to offer just some quick praise to the city residents on Silver Street that have been weathering the construction of our sewer line project. Their entire block is closed, and those folks are parking a block away and walking in with their groceries and all other pieces, and we hope that project moves quickly and we can get those folks back in their driveways. Anything else to add from anybody?
I might add the Sturgis Baseball Rally was held this weekend, and because of rain, they're finishing it right now. As a matter of fact, I think, and Sturgis is in the championship, and I was up to help with the PA work over the weekend, and this young Royer kid pitched a three-hit shutout against a very strong team from Wheatland that was expected. And I don't think there's very many major leaguers that pitch seven innings of shutout baseball, but he did a wonderful job. So Sturgis is in the finals right now, I think, playing up at the ballpark, Strongfield.
Good, thank you. Item five on our agenda is matters that may come before the council. Is there anything that any member of council wants to bring up at this point? How about members of the audience? Is there anything that's not on the agenda that you'd like to bring up? Sure, come on up, state your name, please. Make sure you speak into the mic, and make sure the light's on as well, so everybody can hear you.
They won't have trouble hearing me.
Okay, well, we're live streaming as well, so we want everybody to...
All right, my name is Bob Hoffman. Let me get my little notes out here, so I get everything right. Okay. Just to kind of let you know, I actually have a YouTube channel. We've been covering motorcycle rallies for the last, this is our sixth year here. So we cover motorcycle rallies all over the United States. We actually went to one in Mexico, too. We're different from everybody else, because we actually stand back and see everything that's going on, the good, the bad, and the ugly. So that's kind of some of the things I just wanted to kind of talk about today, a little bit about that. I also used to be a union president for a Fortune 500 company in California. So I've dealt with committees, I've dealt with corporations, I've dealt with CEOs and the likes. So some of the things that we want to talk about, like for instance, this year already, we've already done Daytona, Leesburg, Panama City, and Myrtle Beach. Those are the rallies that we've already had on the books for this year. A lot of people are really scared, I hear a lot of citizens around here, because that's what we do more than anybody else, is we talk to everybody. Everything from, we've reached out to some of you, I think we've even emailed the mayor to reach out to you, the administrator, I think we've got something, we're trying to set up with him now to talk to him. So we're trying to get out, we also talk to local people, find out what's going on, we talk to businesses to see what's going on. This year, the rallies are way down in attendance. Everything from Daytona all the way down to Myrtle Beach, it's less crowded. The difference that we're seeing now, definitely here, we've been coming out to the rally here for over 20 years, to the Sturgis Rally. We've been coming for the last eight years consecutively, and then, like I said, we started the YouTube channel six years ago. But what we see here is the attendance here at the rally has dropped considerably. I remember back here on the 72nd, the 70th, the 74th, back when the Full Throttle Saloon used to be out here on the highway, that if you didn't start out at 5:00 to head for the concerts, you ended up walking your bikes. That's how crowded it used to be. We haven't seen that since the 75th. So the crowds are not here like they used to be, no matter what you think. For instance, Daytona now has actually quit counting how many people there is, because I argue about that all the time. When somebody says, "There's a half a million people showed up," you don't even have 800 million people that live in the whole state. So where are they staying at? So you can't come up with numbers that don't actually go across what goes on. What's most important is what the businesses are doing, just like we do. We talk to the vendors, is this a good year, was this a bad year, what's it ranked with other rallies you've gone to? First of all, to let everybody know, because I've seen some of the board meetings, we watch a lot of it on YouTube or on Facebook that you have out here, that a lot of people are more concerned about the businesses. The ones that are coming for the rallies are going to be here. This is the largest motorcycle rally in the world. I'll repeat that again. This is the largest motorcycle rally. Daytona, when Daytona thinks, when we sit down and talk to the city of Daytona, what they think is, "Sturgis, the rally is just here." So they say, "The town is 7,000 people, look how big we are." Well, we don't pop their little bubble to realize that this actually covers three different states. So it's all over, it's just not here. It's the Black Hills, where a lot of people, when you were talking 2020, that there may not be a rally, people are going to come anyway, because it's the Black Hills. People are going to come. This town is known for that. I've seen some people come up here and say that, you know, they want to get rid of the rally. This rally's been going on for 87 years, so unless you're over 100 years old, this rally was here when you were here. Either born here, or you moved here. This is part of this town. And if you lose the rally, or if you start pushing businesses away, you could end up like Daytona. It's been 20 years now since they pushed off of Daytona, they pushed out the rally. It went out to Destination Daytona in Ormond Beach. In February of this year, the council approved, "Bring the rally back to Daytona." And all the businesses are saying, "No." Why? Because the only people that want to come on these extra lots, the convention center lot, a lot of the other lots down on A1A, are tattoo shops and t-shirt shops. We already got more than we need, just like you have here. You have way more of those than you even need. You don't want to chase people away. The Laughlin River Run, that's one of the reasons it died. It got to where they were on Main Street, they were in their casinos, they were selling lawn chairs and recliners and mattresses. Well, that's kind of hard to put on the back of a motorcycle, to take with you. One of the things I wanted to talk about, which is going to be coming up in your next agenda here, is the parking on Main Street.
Sir, I got to stop. We can't talk about an agenda item at this point in the meeting. And I would ask for you, in order for us to keep moving, to get to your point, we hope that we have a massive rally, and we understand that some of these others throughout the country haven't been producing.
Yeah, well, this looks like it's going to be a good rally. It's not going to be the 75th. You can tell that just there, some of the big campgrounds aren't completely sold out yet. And that's what we do. We monitor all that kind of stuff. There's some really successful rallies out here. Leesburg, which is a very small one in Florida, they've gotten down to where they run a very excellent rally. The people come there and they're happy. What makes this rally so great over all the other rallies is, one, the city basically has welcomed us for years. You know, they're inviting, there's rallies we go to that the doors are locked. Businesses close up because they're afraid of the big old bikers. You don't realize that half these people that have motorcycles, my bike's a $40,000 bike, you know, and I've got an $80,000 RV that we drag, and I've got a $65,000 truck. So we have money. So that's the thing that a lot of people don't realize, like the Carvet Show that's going to come through here, and the Trans Am Show. I'm actually more of a mechanic on autos than I am a motorcycle guy, but I can't afford an $80,000 to $100,000 car that I may have to dump another $80,000 to fix it up. But a motorcycle's a whole lot easier to keep it up and update it and ride it all the time. So those are some of the things that when you're looking at things, that's something you should think about, is the motorcycle people, which is what Daytona now has figured out, that we wish we had that back. They're not going to get it back, because Daytona has taken it. It's kind of like the dealership here. Black Hills Harley, they bought another lot, and it's full of vendors, too. And they've got a lot of vendors that keep coming there. Some of the vendors might start moving out of here, just because it's not, might not be as welcoming as it has been in the past. So those are just some of the things that I just kind of wanted to emphasize with you, to think about, like the parking and all the different things that are going on. This year, last year is the first year that I've seen more cars here than I have ever seen, ever. That when I used to come down Junction, it would be maybe 50 motorcycles and five or six cars. Last year, it was all cars, and I seen 12 motorcycles lined up. I could get over to the line, and I could count them down. And I count that kind of stuff, just like the motorcycles out here. Do you really know how many motorcycles actually park out on Main Street during the busiest day? What do you think is out there? What's your guess?
1,500.
You're actually very conservative. It's 2,300. 2,300 from one end to the other end, not counting the side streets, but just counting Main Street in the center. So that gives you a really, so that's the kind of things we do. We actually go through the crowd, we click to see how many people are there. We kind of do our own counting to get our understanding of how many people actually come to a rally. Last year, some of the businesses I talked, their estimate was about 125,000 is what they estimated that came through Main Street on the week that was here, which that's a big crowd. But when people start thinking 300, 500, Daytona does that, it's, first of all, you've got to figure out, where's everybody staying at?
Yeah. Well, it's definitely an impact that's regional, and only so many people can fit in Sturgis at any one time, and that's why they come rolling through. So, Bob, I will respond to your reach out. And we appreciate you coming with your comments. If you'd like to comment when we get into the agenda item on parking, please feel free to step up then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that's interested in making a comment about a non-agenda item? Yes, sir?
My name is Rich Johnson, 1925 Pine Street. Two comments, or two questions, two subject matters. One about the council being transparent and available. What is, is there a specific procedure to get ahold of your council person, other than a phone call? Because I've reached out to my council representative and never got a response. So is that the way to do it, or is it an email?
I know that you've called me, and I'm sorry that I haven't had a chance to call you back tomorrow, and I'd be happy to talk to you tomorrow, find a time.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And two...
So to answer your question is, councilors' phone numbers, email addresses are on the city webpage, and if you're having trouble, please just reach out to any city department, and they'll make sure they get the piece passed on.
Okay. It's not, I didn't want to keep calling or emailing. It's nothing earth-shattering. You know, I don't want to bug somebody who says, "Here, let's get together, let's talk." I had some concerns. But anyways, the main concern I have is about the rally and the appearance and contact that I've had with different people around the country of the negative perception of the rally here in Sturgis. I've had no less than six different groups call me, from Florida, Texas, Arizona, Nevada, and California, wanting to know if we're going to have a rally, what's going on with the city. They watch the website, it's just a negative perception. And I kind of thought about it for a little bit, and I went to the candidates' night when this board was elected, and I was a little bit disappointed with the overall attitude of the people that were running for office and their negative outlook on the rally, specifically. And, I mean, I'll name names. Mark, you said, "We put up with it." Alex, you said, "We tolerate it." If the city wants to be successful in any business, you need to embrace that business. You need to be part of it. And you can kill this rally as a city, just as Bob had alluded to, just like Daytona did. There's been multiple rallies around the country, that unless you embrace them, unless you put off a positive vibe, let's say, people wonder what's going on, and it'll definitely affect the outcome of the rally. So I encourage you to embrace the rally, as I know you can. I mean, there's a lot of positives that go with it. It's a lot of work, and the city, I mean, does a tremendous job. It is a lot of work. You guys put the time in, but you need to, I think it would benefit the city if we could have a positive attitude or positive social media presence. There's been a lot of different social media avenues where you look at it, you go, "What's going on with the rally?" And they're not positive, you know, they're just a negative presence there. So that was it, that's all I had. I just want to see, I want to see us be successful, continue to be successful, and the city move forward with it, and we can all have fun.
Standing.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Anyone else have a non-agenda item they want to make a comment on? Hearing none, we'll continue on to department updates. 6.1 is our sales tax report. Aaron?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Before I get into the two reports, just, I did get contacted from Black Hills Energy in looking at setting up a presentation for you guys next meeting on the 7th of July, talking about wildland mitigation. I know they've been, we've had some meetings with them a couple months ago. I know they've been socializing this and publicizing this out on the news and stuff, but they've been trying to get with all the cities, too. So just for your information, we'll probably set up some kind of presentation for the 7th of July. Onto the sales report. If you, this is looking at May, and just comparing May over the last three years, and overall for the year, we're up 2.5%, but in May, we did go down just almost 15% back in May. So we had a couple months there, we've had some significant dips, March and May. If you look at it across the state, when I looked at the information on the state's website, it doesn't look like the state as a general, they're having a little bit of contraction, maybe less than 1%, but not that significant in May. So maybe it's just isolated right here in the Northern Black Hills, but something to be concerned about is we're trying to generate, you know, revenue for our sales tax, to continue to do the things that we do, but just continue to monitor that. The next one is looking at our special sales tax, at 1%, and this one has been underperforming for the whole year. You know, currently, we're at 115,000, just over 115,000 through May. Last year, we were at 129,000. So this last month, we were down almost 33%, and we're just above 11% lower than we were in 2024. So again, just some concerns. Hopefully, we'll trend upward as we get into the rally, and hopefully that, you know, the Sturgis Rally doesn't have the same type of performance as some of those other large rallies. Pending your questions on sales tax, I'll move on to the next topic.
Well, that's certainly not the news that we wanted to hear, Aaron, but it's the news that you're delivering. You know, sales tax is a large portion of our budget, so let's hope that we see a turnaround in that.
Good to go. Next one is the HR report, human resources. First thing is, just want to let everybody know that Paula Baskers, her last day was on Friday last week. Paula has spent 35 years with the city of Sturgis, all of that in the law enforcement center. So they had a nice going-away party for her here, down here in the library. So congratulations to Paula, 35 years, that's a retirement well deserved. We have had a couple vacancies filled. Our Public Safety, Donovan Conrad is now our new cold enforcement officer. Conrad comes from the Streets Department. In our Finance Office, Dylan Vassenich is now our senior accountant, and he is replacing Joanne here that resigned here a couple months ago. And in Public Works, we have Koi Krauser, who's working in the streets as a heavy equipment operator. Koi comes with a lot of experience, he has worked for the city in the past, and at this point, we are kind of short in the Streets Department, so that was a good fill for us. We have a couple of key vacancies. The one I've been talking about in the past is that HR Director and the Planning Director. We now have nine applicants, since I put this report together on Friday morning, for the HR position, and one of those that applied for the HR position also applied for the planning position, the planning director position. So we're looking at nine for HR and one for the Planning Director. So we'll be looking at setting up and conducting those interviews over the next couple weeks. And just for some opportunities for us as we get ready for the rally, in our Finance Department, we are looking for some people to work a few weeks to help us out prior to the rally, and in that first week of the rally, as we process all the vendor licenses. Looks like that second bullet on the liquor store and the law enforcement, I think we're sitting well there. I think, is there another one that we talked about, Anne, today? That we're looking for? Bottom line, if you're looking for some rally opportunities for a couple weeks, we may have some in Public Works and some other areas. But we are, I think we're, what, six weeks out, you know, from that event? So again, we're looking for a few more people. So pending your questions, that's all I have for the HR update.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. You covered some of the item eight, Mayor's Report, but that's good to go, Aaron. So beings that, we covered the majority of the items in Section 8.
How about Section 7, Old Business?
Old Business.
Oh, sorry. I jumped way ahead, because you got me there a little bit. I'll blame it off on you. Old Business is 7.1, and that was an item that was tabled from our last meeting, and that was consideration to approve Downtown Sturgis Foundation, Main Street Motorcycle Only Parking, July 28 through 31st. We had extensive discussion on that agenda item at our last meeting, and it was ultimately tabled to this meeting, pending some further review by the city staff and some conversations with the Downtown Foundation. Aaron, do you want to cover your report?
Sure. Also, I'd ask Mark, Mark, are you in the audience? If you want to come, did meet with, Rick and I met with Mark last Friday, and really with the intent of providing some options with that, tabling that last meeting to this meeting, want to make sure you guys have some options to consider. Probably the two options that we considered the most on Friday when I was visiting with Mark was that first option is to identify, you know, one or two blocks, and this would be kind of going back to the original one, have signage out there for motorcycle-only parking on the edges, on the curbs, and leave the through traffic open for, you know, for any kind of traffic that wants to go through. But instead of doing it for the three or four blocks, put it down to one or maybe two blocks, and have the signage out there, and kind of as a test to see how that works, how difficult it is to enforce, and if it does push vehicle or parking into other areas. We've had challenges in the past, like moving over to the liquor store, to the Lynn's County Market, and creating some challenges there. But again, that's more speculative, so in terms of what those consequences could be. So that was just the first option. The second option was one that Rick Bush had talked to you about last meeting, was sometimes from a staff perspective, the easiest thing to do is to be able to just block off the whole block, and just kind of control it, and just allow just motorcycle traffic in that particular one block. So that was the second option. The third option was one that socialized with me with the mayor after last meeting, was looking at it, you know, keeping both vehicular parking and motorcycle parking on all the blocks, but have some designated areas on each block that would be just motorcycle only. So it would be a mixture of both vehicles, cars and trucks, and again, specific areas that are identified for motorcycle. The fourth option is basically looking at that, but maybe a combination of any of those three. And then the fifth option is not to do it this year and to consider it in future years. From talking with the staff and listening to the last meeting, and just talking with Rick and Jody specifically, because that's mostly the impacts in Public Works and Public Safety, just looking at some possible unintended consequences or consequences. You know, the first one is, you know, impacted vendors, as they're trying to get into and establish their vendor space. I know sometimes it gets challenging for the business owners down on Main Street, because you have the vendors parking, unloading their vehicles to do those kind of operations that are setting up for the rally. So anytime you control or block off any of our Main Street prior to the rally, that, you know, we anticipate that would have some impact on vendors as they're trying to set up. The second consequence is, you know, again, was I was talking about before, is that if you don't have vehicular parking on Main Street, you're going to push them off into other locations. And what is that impact for those businesses or those establishments when you do that? The third impact is when we're, we don't actually mobilize a lot of our law enforcement, and that, when we do it, is that weak. And so we really don't get up to full capacity for public safety until the, you know, right before the rally begins. And we have them coming in, we're doing in-processing. I know that Jody's doing some training with them, getting them oriented into the surrounding areas, as they're ready to go. So the more that we do before the rally, the more difficult it is for a law enforcement perspective, because we just don't have the capacity yet, at least not this year. You know, it's one of those things, if we were to do it, we'd have to, you know, you could potentially increase law enforcement, part-time folks beforehand, but for historically and this year, again, we won't get a large capacity until about the end of July. And then the fourth one is just looking at it from Public Works, you know, it does increase what they're having to do that week, and they, right now, they're already started doing all the, a lot of the rally tasks. You saw the stuff they did for the banners here over the last couple days, getting ready for summer tourism. When we get into the first week in July, we're going to turn, we'll be taking all those banners down and putting all this stuff up for the rally. And it takes about three hours, three or four hours to put three of them up in the mornings, because we don't want to block off traffic. So that takes a little bit of time, and then all the additional, putting out the totes, you know, there's a lot of smaller tasks that are important tasks as we get into that final week of July, as we're getting ready for the actual official date on the 1st of August. And then the fifth one is, this goes back to the optics, that the rally is growing. You know, I understand that... And then the fifth one is this goes back to the optics that the rally is growing. You know, I, I understand that uh, you know, I've had some conversations, you know, about the, the council maybe not being as pro rallies we have in the bass, in the past. I guess what I appreciate about you, council, and this is just coming as an individual living in Sturgis most of my, uh, life, is that you represent the city of Sturgis. There's a lot of people in Sturgis that support the rally. But as you know, there's people in, in our, in our community that doesn't necessarily support the rally. And I think you guys are a good mixture on the council of that. But at the end of the day, there's a consensus that the rally is here and we want it to be as successful as we can possibly be. This year, as we've briefed here a couple of months ago, instead of having the city, uh, spend a lot of money and trying to enhance the experience with a lot like the tattoo kind parade, and we had the military appreciation on Tuesday of the first part of that week. What our focus has been is really just focusing in on, um, public safety and maintaining clean and maintained streets, uh, during that timeframe. So again, at that point, that's the five options as we've seen it. Those are some of the consequences. Uh, absolutely open us up for discussion and whatever your decisions are, you know, we'll execute and make it work the best we can.
Thank you, Aaron. Uh, do you have any on any of these options? Do you have any, uh, anticipated costs associated with any of them? I mean, assuming that all of them except option five, and I want to point out option five is there was a typo, I think there, no motorcycle only parking for the eighty-fifth rally. That should be prior to the, the eighty-fifth rally.
Sure. Yeah, I would say for a cost, you know, there might be some additional resource costs in terms of some signage and stuff. And I know Rick was talking about that last meeting. The other cost would be is that we, you know, we already have a lot of public works already working. The cost to be able to put more effort onto Main Street the week before is just not able to do all the other additional things that we do to set up for success during the official dates of the rally on the first of the tenth. So from a public works perspective. Uh, on the law enforcement, and again, if, if Rick and Jody want to, you know, speak more on that because they have a lot better, uh, insights onto their operations. From a law enforcement, you know, it will take some, because again, when you put signages up, you know, there will be some expectations that we're enforcing, whatever that policy is going to be even during the rally. So it will take some time from Jody and his, and his team, uh, as they're, you know, trying to execute that and also trying to do all the other additional tasks. And then on top of that, trying to do the in-processing for all our mobilized, part-time law enforcement officers that are going to be working during the rally. Rick or Jody, do you have any more that you want to provide?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So from a law enforcement standpoint, probably one of the biggest things is going to be overtime from full-time staff. We also have a special request in through the state to utilize our reserve officers. Uh, the men and women from our reserve association play a big part of that during the rally. So we will, there'll be an added cost with probably bringing them in to help, um, with some foot patrol covering shifts downtown. As you know, with the vendors coming in, it's a, it is a battle. So we'll be, uh, we'll be down there trying to be as proactive as we can. Whether you close the street or not, because we have a, we have issues with our vendors coming in. So, um, we'll try to keep and maintain visibility because anytime excuse me, if the streets are closed, we need to make sure we have law enforcement presence down there. Um, we don't have the availability to actively patrol the main streets, uh, in our patrol cars due to that. So we'll be on foot, motorcycles and probably bicycles during that time with our reserves and what we have with our full-time staff.
So Jody, you, you would be down there no matter what decision council makes on this?
Yeah, every year it's gotten worse and worse. So if we don't shut the streets down, we still have a parking issue. We have a city ordinance that goes into effect August, uh, I'm sorry, July. I want to say, uh, seventeen or fifteenth maybe, um, to August fifteenth that you cannot park down there. If unless you can park diagonally like a regular vehicle, you can't, um, take up more than one parking spot. So we're down there proactively addressing people who are parked up against the curb with their U-Hauls or their trailers or the vendors trying to load. So between, uh, eight AM and six PM, don't quote me exactly on that ordinance, but, uh, we will make sure that they're not parked there. They have to be on a side street. So, we've tried to, uh, maintain that as much as possible, but it is, um, a daunting task. We'll probably look at adding, uh, reserve force coming in a few days earlier than usual. You know, we usually, as Aaron mentioned, our main, uh, push for our, our help is, uh, Friday, Friday at noon, they come in or Friday at two. So we'll probably be adding, uh, reserve staff and, and foot traffic for, uh, Monday, potentially, depending on how things play out.
Thank you, Jody. Rick, do you have any input on? Do, do any of the options offer a different impact to you, to your team?
Sure. Uh, you know, for, for me and, and for what we do, like I spoke last week, uh, you know, probably the, the, the easiest or the, the, the two options that are probably closing down that last block between third and four, just, just closing it completely. Uh, there's, there's not a whole lot I have to do then, uh, far as moving barricades and it, it's all the stuff that we already have. So we're gonna, that would be set up in advance, uh, just be a piece that we didn't need to do. Um, any of the other options does pose a little bit of a problem for us. Number one, you know, I, I can't sit up here and tell you what it's going to cost, what it's not because we've never done it. Uh, some of it's going to be learning on the fly. I, I would share that, that how I conceive how it would have to work with the extra signage and stuff. You know, now I'm bringing my guys in to move signage so that we can sweep the streets, so that we can pick up garbage, things that in, in, Aaron wasn't wrong, but when we start doing our rally prep, really, I mean, we're talking the second week of, of July, first week of July. I can't just not do those things. Or, I mean, for safety reasons, we have a set schedule that we do every year. And, and not doing a piece of it's not really an option unless it's hanging banners or, or I don't know what. But, but the, the garbage cans got to go out, the temporary signals got to go out. I mean, all of those things have to happen. All of our signs we've got to remove. Those, I mean, those aren't an option to not do them. The other thing to go, going into this year, I mean, I've got a five man, I don't know that if everybody realizes that my street department is five guys. I'm too short, so I got a three man street department going into the rally. I've got four guys on sanitation that none of them have ever worked the rally. So again, we've got things to figure out and learn from public works. I mean, this is a, a, a year that we've never gone into a rally like this. So, uh, you know, I, I do have some concerns. If I can't get those, my street positions filled, I'm not sure. I mean, I've, I've got a jockey around every other department to try and backfill that. So, you know, I have concerns and, and when I do that, those are guys that haven't done this before. It's one thing when I'm full up and I've got a crew of guys that have been doing it for fifteen, twenty years, it, it all becomes automatic. But when I have new guys and a new garbage crew that's never done it, there's going to certainly be some, some learning curve. So, uh, for me, those are the two, two best options is, is I think we can manage that full closure. I think that provides the easiest management, maybe for Jody, other than the fact that he's got to rely on, on bicycles and motorcycles to, to patrol it or, or foot teams. I mean, because we would close it for cars. But, but really for, for my side of the fence, that makes the most sense or, or to just leave it how we've always done it. You know, one of the things that you're going to consider tonight already on the street closure resolutions is whether or not to keep, uh, the street closure in effect on Sunday night. You know, traditionally we've always tore down on, on Sunday morning at two AM. Last year we didn't do that till Monday morning at two AM, uh, because of the race. Without the race, we can still manage that. We, we've now got a year underneath of our belt. We know what that, what that takes. Uh, for us, it's all about cost. You know, it, it's that Sunday coming in, that night is all overtime. So it adds a whole night of overtime. It, it would be the same with Jody, uh, by keeping that. So there is an inherent cost with that. And that's money that, that you know, Mayor, uh, when we put the budget together, we, we, that money's not in the budget. We, we cut down all of our overtime. So, you know, likely some of that's going to have to be supplemented uh, by the council at the end of the year in order to do that.
Mark, to summarize your statements, I guess, from our last meeting, you, I mean, you started down the line that we had a lot of employees of vendors and different other businesses that have built up for the, for the rally that are capitalizing our parking spaces during, during the week before. But, uh, you know, one of the, uh, the main topics was trying to provide a better experience. And obviously, you know, we want a good experience for our rally attendees. We want a good experience for our residents as well at the same time. Is there any of these, I mean, you were pretty strong that it was basically from First Street to Fourth Street. Uh, but there was no, no options from the downtown group. Is, uh, are any of these options possibilities?
Well, I, uh, actually I'd love to throw up one more option, um, that I think I, I visited, uh, with, uh, a council member or two since the last meeting and I know that, um, uh, was some concern about, uh, whether it's, I can't remember, it's like extending the rally or, or whatever. Let me back up just one step. This whole idea, um, came forward as a way to, to, yes, to, um, make a better experience for our guests to, um, over time, I truly think it'll help, uh, drive some sales tax revenue. Number three, the, uh, since the last meeting, I took a look at that, uh, twenty-two, twenty-two Texas A&amp;M study. And part of that study, um, one of the things that pointed out was that thirty-five point nine percent of our guests arrive before the official start of the rally. And we've seen that, uh, our businesses up and down the street have seen it. And I'm sure it, I know that, uh, sales tax doesn't get broken out into weeks, unfortunately. But I can tell you as a business owner down there, that's exactly what's happening. To, to me, the best option would be to take the barricades that go between Fourth and Fifth Street for the rally and just put them between Third Street and Fourth Street in the four days that I was just, you know, suggesting. And leave the through traffic. And here's the reason behind that. One, there's no additional signage that needs to be purchased. Uh, the signs are already on those barricades. Two, um, back to the, again, I think it was number five on there, the concern with certainly some counselors and some citizens about, um, extending the rally. This, uh, uh, if we do a full closure to a street downtown, I think that's going to have a lot more of a feel of a, of a, an extension than the version that I was really originally talking about. Leaving the Main Street open to vehicle traffic is going to satisfy our citizens, I think, better that, you know, use Main Street often as a, as the thoroughfare. And I guess one more P, I, I, so as far as costs, I don't think it'll cost the city any money to do that. As far as enforcement goes, um, I mean, in a way, I don't know, I guess Jody'd have to weigh in on this, but you know, I've, I spent a ton of time, I lived down at the old green elevator during the rally. So, and in a camper, not in the elevator itself, but just, um, I'm back and forth all the time. That block between Fourth and Fifth Street that, um, is bike parking only on the sides, I see vehicles that are parked there every now and then. And they're not getting towed. And I think that's a great policy. At least I, I don't see any of them getting towed. And I think that's a good policy. The signs are up. We're trying to save that for some overflow for bikes. I, I think the same policy could carry over down to that, uh, whatever sections we do downtown, if there's any sections done at all downtown. I feel like this is an education campaign for people that arrive early and number one, here's an option. If you're on your bike, you've got a little section that's dedicated to you. I think if you, uh, uh, come down there and, 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 you know, to me, it's similar to the open container. The open container was pretty chaotic, both for, I know for, for chief. And, uh, it was certainly chaotic for us business owners that were trying to figure out how to educate people on this. I think it's an education campaign. I don't want anybody getting towed between, um, any of those, uh, barricades, other than possibly a, uh, somebody that's blatantly violating the rules, you know, that is going to try and park there every day. So again, I think I said it before, not trying to cause any headaches for any departments, not trying to cost the city any money whatsoever. And I guess the last thing I would say is this isn't, and I probably should have started this with before, um, I'm not outside of this over five or 10 years encouraging more of our tourists to come early. I'm not talking about adding vehicles to our downtown. It's the same amount of vehicles downtown. I just want to put the bikes in one spot. And the, um, the other vehicles in some of the other spots. It doesn't, we're not adding any vehicles anywhere. We are just rearranging where we're letting some of them park is the way I look at it. And worst case scenario, if over the next five or 10 years, we get more traffic downtown and more tourists coming early, I think that's only going to make our businesses happier and our, their city happier with obviously more, uh, sales tax revenue, which it sounds like we need more of.
Thank you, Mark.
Sorry, I know, I know that's a super long answer for, to your question.
Well, I think there's an important point to talk about. I mean, part of the reason that, uh, the rally was extended, if you will, into the Friday, the, the first Friday, was because the people were here. We needed to close the streets because people were parking in the middle of the streets. They were taking the streets over. And, uh, there was a particular night that, uh, I mean, people are just having fun. I mean, I'm not trying to be negative towards them, but you know, uh, they were raising heck. And, uh, when our law enforcement, our few law enforcement that were on, because we weren't staffed up, went to try and take care of safety on the streets, they started getting pelted by coins. And, uh, that led to the Friday. I think I'm a hundred percent correct on that. Uh, it wasn't somebody's desire to raise more money during the rally. It was a, a, a vehicle for us to have better safety in our community. Does any council member have a comment or a question?
Yeah, I was looking through this stuff and talking with Mark and the downtown business board and that, I think the first option is probably the best one of them, if we're going to do any of them. And just put the sign, those barricades up on the, the two sides and kind of just monitor it and really get some data off of it. Cause I mean, we don't know what it's going to do.
I would agree and support what Alex says. Um, for one thing, for a couple of reasons. One, it's a, what you're identifying as a problem and you're trying to find a solution to. And it's been brought up year after year after year. So to me, that means it's something that we need to try. And worst case scenario, it doesn't work out, we don't ever do it again. So I would be in support of closing off between three and four on Main. Whether we close it completely or not, Rick's shaking his head at me. Would you prefer, Rick, there to be through traffic or no traffic at all?
We'll do whatever you want.
Ruth, I, uh, you know, one of the outliers we have is ADA and we have to have those handicap spaces. During the rally, we move them up right over here, right across from City Hall. That's, I brought up to, uh, Administrator Jordan after our legal and finance meeting that maybe a portion could be motorcycle parking only, but we could maintain all of our handicap spaces. I mean, we'd have more, more zones, if you will. We could have the counting, but we wouldn't have to have a, uh, an ADA risk. Or we wouldn't have to move any of those handicap spaces. I would hope that, uh, there was a, in any of these that, uh, you know, after we get a year, that, uh, Public Works guys can figure out a technique on how they can get the trash and, and whatnot and make it happen. If council would back some of this, but taking a whole block, we do have to move handicap spaces. So that would have to be a part of what Public Works does.
I don't think we're ready to have motorcycle parking only those four, those four days for the rally. I don't think we have a clue what it's going to cost, what the payback any of it is. I'm not in favor of picking blocks. If you pick between three and four, you've just catered to two businesses directly. Is that fair to the rest of them? How do you decide? I, I'm not in favor of motorcycle only parking. I, like I told Mark last time, then I think you've told anybody that was not a motorcycle, we don't want you in town. And I don't agree with that.
Thank you for the comments, Sarah. Does anybody else have anything? How about members of the, of the audience? Has anybody got a comment they want to make? About members of the, of the audience, has anybody got a comment they want to make?
I would like to say, you know, I'm, the, the whole vendor thing, putting vendors on side streets, it's concerning to me. You know, it's been, it's been a problem for a lot of years, people parking in people's driveways and I would like to discuss, you know, for future, what to do with some of these vendors. I mean, it seems like, you know, we send, they'll park over at Lynn's and then get towed and, I mean, does the city need to eventually come up with a spot that we put all the vendors in their trucks? I, I don't know, I don't know what the best option for that is. But the side streets are getting bombarded with, and then we hear, hear from the residents, you know, these guys are parked in our driveways and everything else and taking up our parking spots out front of our houses. I don't know what the best option for that is, but I sure wonder about being able to put our vendors in a spot. It'd be nice, you know, their trucks and if we shuttled back and forth. I think, I think this is all, we need to look at this in the future. I don't know if we're ready right now, but I think we need to look at it.
Thank you, Terry. Bob, you had a comment?
So I have two. One, on your ADA for handicap, we have a lot of trikes, we have a lot of motorcycles, we have veterans that actually have one leg and they've got a prosthetic and they will take the veteran, they will take the handicap spots, so you do not need to move handicap spots, just to let you know. There's plenty of handicap plates on motorcycles and on trikes. So that, just to let you know on that there. The other concern that you were talking about, finding a place for these, the vendors to park. You've got a giant lot over here by the soccer field. You've got school buses. What you do is you charge these vendors 25 bucks, you put it on there and that's where they park and you have bus shuttle. You can also use that same lot because that's one free lot that everybody can park at. There's no charge for parking on that big giant lot back there, it's really big. Plenty of room for trailers or whatever they're hauling. You, you take them and you have a bus that runs up and down the street, out here on Junction or La Zou, pick whatever street you want to do, if you want to do La Zou, so it's running parallel and you just have certain stops that you just drop off, either Patreons that just want to come to the rally, they're driving cars, or if it's, if it's the vendors, you could have an area that's cordoned off over there. That would be one good, easy solution and you write that on the contracts for the vendors so they know this is where you're supposed to park. And if one of their constituents or employees get towed, you always blame it back on the owner of the business. They signed this agreement and said, this is where you can park. I know they've also talked about the alley having trouble with. You should do the same thing that Dakota Mart does. Don't let the police department take care of it, let Dakota Mart take care of that. People park for a certain time back there, a ton load, a half an hour, an hour at a time, any more than that, you let them get towed by the same people that's taking care of the Dakota Mart, so that's a good idea. But when you're talking about the parking down here, I just see, just for instance, this last week, right in front of Domino's, they were doing some construction work, had that truck across there all day long with his trailer, eight spots he took up. Streets were full. I seen 12 motorcycles come from Canada that drove through, there was no parking spots, they went to the end, they made a U-turn and went right on out of town. So the, I'm not sure, I didn't get a chance to talk to them to see if they were going to, they've been through. But once again, if I'm on my bike and I ride down Main Street and there's no parking, I'm heading out to full throttle because they've got plenty of parking for me to park my bike up close. I would recommend closing that street off completely down there, that last block, make it only motorcycles. I would do the other thing is, last month, he mentioned that, you know, where are our local people park? You've got a parking lot right over here, put a couple cardboard signs up that says locals only, local residents. That is no farther for them to walk here to the bank, the grocery store, there's no trouble getting to the post office or the, to the grocery store here. That has nothing to do with the rally either way. There's still, there's still openings for them to park in both those parking lots. So, there's no other, only real business for anybody to really come here because the, the insurance offices and stuff back here, which is my insurance agent, we come down this back street here anyway and get in his lot. So that's easy access there, there's plenty of parking there in their lot. So, I think this is a good idea to at least try that one block, but I would completely block it off because you, you're going to get people, just like, we've seen it last year, some guy drove down with his little car all the way down, a couple of blocks down Main Street during the rally, didn't know what he was doing. And the chief and the people got out there and they stopped him after he got about halfway down and made him back up. Luckily, I think he hit three or four bikes, but that's going to happen no matter what. But if you, if you just put down and still let cars drive through that last block, you're still going to get cars that's going to park in those spots. Because people, I don't want to say they're stupid, but it's just people don't pay attention anymore.
Thank you, Bob, you know, a couple of comments to that. I mean, alleyways are public, public areas and so it'd be our law enforcement that would have to manage anything. We can't let, you know, any business or anybody else manage that. And we do have a bus service already, so those guys could, those vendors could utilize those, those services by parking somewhere else if they wanted to. But again, public streets are hard for us to manage, so, well, hard to restrict people from parking on. Does anyone else have a comment? We've spent 20, 25 minutes.
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't think I'd ever be doing this again. I'm Rosemary Roth. I don't live in Sturgis, I live a couple of miles out of Sturgis at Blecksburg, but I probably volunteer in Sturgis about as much as anybody. So, it's my town. And as I'm listening to this tonight, I'm thinking, something really important I learned at First Interstate Bank was something John Johnson told me and he said, always look for ways to say yes. There's always the negative, there's always going to be the negative and we have to look for all of the little stumbling blocks along the way. We have to do that, we're, we're responsible, we have to do that. But at the same time, look for ways to say yes. This is a huge tourism event and people are coming early. Let's give them that opportunity. Let's give people an opportunity to experience this thing that I've become proud of. I've never been on a Harley, I've never been on a motorcycle, but I'm so proud of what we do here. I can, I can travel to Mobile, Alabama and someone will seek me out in a restaurant and say, I have a Sturgis shirt on, are you from Sturgis? Yes. I'm proud of that. I don't hang my head about the rally, I don't think it's a pain, I don't go downtown if I don't want to. But when, when you're thinking about stuff like this, about maybe changing something, making it better, maybe making it better, maybe making more money so that Rick Bush can hire some more people, he needs more people. We have to, we have to stay positive and open about that kind of thing. And I just encourage you to do that. I know that everyone doesn't love the rally, but we have it. It's a huge tourism thing. We shouldn't even call it the rally, it's a tourist event and it's one of the biggest in the country. So embrace it. Don't hang your heads about it anymore. People are going to get mad, people are going to be happy, but, but embrace it and do your best to make it better, to generate these dollars so that our street department has enough help. And so, so the city has more money to do what they need to do. I'm nervous, Rick, I'm going to go back and sit down.
Thank you, Rosemary. Thank you for being part of our community. We've probably reached a point where, is there some counselor willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to block Main Street between blocks, streets three and four, third and fourth, and have it be for motorcycle only parking for the dates requested.
We've got a first by Ruth to block between Third and Fourth Street for motorcycle parking only.
I'll second.
Second by Nick. Is there any further discussion on the motion? I'm going to roll call this so that, so that we land where we need to. I'll call for the vote. Mark?
No.
Ruth?
Yes.
Tony?
No.
Alex?
Yes.
Terry?
No.
Jim?
No.
Nick?
Yes.
And so, that's three to three tonight, so that means I get to vote on that then and I vote no on that.
Should be three. Vote there seven, should be four and three.
Three and, yeah, there is. No, no, you are no, yes.
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 Three, no, no.
Yes.
So then that motion carried.
No.
Four?
It was four no's. Three yeses, right?
One, two, three, four. Four no's. And can you help us out? Four no's?
There's four no's. It was Mark and Tony, Terry and Jim. They voted no.
So that motion did not pass then. We're going to, we did a roll call, I'm going to have a yes and a no here if we have another motion. We'll keep straight up tabs. That motion failed. The vote is, Eric, can you help me out with procedure? Is this item dead or was, is the floor open to another motion if someone wanted to make a?
I don't see a reason why the council couldn't make another motion.
Thank you. Is there any other motions? Is there any other motions? Hearing none? We'll declare that agenda item as complete and continue on. Thank you. Now we get to item eight. And Aaron covered most of item eight and we have got some new hires and whatnot. We do have one positive thing, I know Coy Crowser and I think he spent nearly 20 years working for the city in the past, so, no?
He spent a few years, the last 21 years he's been employed in Rapid City.
Okay. He didn't work as long as his brother's brother. Got some rally firefighters and those, those, those folks that were putting on for the, for the rally, but I think item 8.5 is the, the item and of course, that needs to be concurred with by the council and that's the appointment to, of the citizens to the city ordinance committee. We've had several, several citizens make application. We had Rose Byers, Casey Weedman, Bob Havela, Steve Anders. And it would be my recommendation that Bob Havela and Steve Anders would be placed on the ordinance committee. Does council concur with that? If so, would somebody be willing to make a motion?
I'll move to Bob and Steve.
We got a first by Mark and a second by Terry to approve Bob Havela and Steve Anders for the citizen seats on the ordinance committee. We will be having other citizen opportunity as we have subcommittees under that. So, I think, I think we want to keep everyone we can involved in this process. Is there any other discussion on the motion in a second? I'll call for the vote. Those in favor of the approval of those two to the ordinance committee indicate by stating yes. Those opposed, no. All right, that carried, thank you. Item nine is the consent agenda. We've got two items on the consent agenda. Let her flip the page over to make sure I'm not misspeaking. Two items, we approve both concurrently. When we approve the consent agenda, we've got council minutes and consideration to approve a veteran exemption. Is there anyone that wants to remove one of those items from the consent agenda and have it considered separately? Anybody from the audience want to have one of those items considered separately? Hearing none. Ask, asking for removal from the consent agenda, is there somebody willing to make a motion for both items on the consent agenda?
I'll motion second.
We've got a first by Alex and a second by, I didn't, Jim. Those in favor of approval of the consent agenda indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Item 10 is approval of the claims. Administrator Jordan, you indicated you had an adjustment on the claims.
Yes, on, I think it was on page three underneath sponsorship, there was $40,000. That was a lease for the museum parking lot for Rockford-Fosgate. We haven't completed the Rockford-Fosgate amendment agreement, so request to pull that $40,000 lease agreement with the museum from this particular claims. We'll cover it next claims.
Very good. Does anybody have any questions on the claims this month? About any members of the public, any questions on the claims, comments? Is there someone willing to make a motion approving the claims minus the $40,000?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
And a first by Alex, a second by Mark to approve the claims minus the $40,000. All those in favor indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That carried unanimously. Item 11 is when we adjourn our normal council meeting and reconvene as the Board of Adjustment to consider use on review or other administrative appeals. So we are now in the Board of Adjustment. Rick?
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. Up for consideration tonight is a use on review application for 1040 Junction Avenue. This is the property that we all know as a Sturgis Harley-Davidson. They're asking for a use on review to allow that property to be utilized as a motorcycle dealership. Just a little bit of background information, that property is currently zoned as general commercial one, which does not allow for that use. It however, is within the downtown overlay district and as defined in the Sturgis Municipal Code, that is a use that is allowed under a use on review for that property because it is in the overlay district. For your knowledge, the overlay district basically comes the, the downtown area from Middle to Fourth and then from Sherman to La Zell. That's the downtown overlay district, so this property does, does lie within there. The public hearing was held on this at the Sturgis Planning Commission meeting on June 3rd, 2025. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this and as well the staff, we have no concerns. It certainly meets all of the criteria for this. We did send out, or the applicants did send out certified letters to all the adjoining property owners within 200 feet. We did have one returned as not received, that was the directly adjacent property owner. I did speak to him subsequently, he was at the meeting tonight and I'm not sure if there's any other public members here. We had one gentleman that spoke in favor of it the night of the public hearing. I would ask, Mayor, that you open the floor to the public to hear any, any comments if there are any.
Thank you, Rick. Any members of the public are interested in commenting on this? Eric, do we need to, in the past, we've sworn people in, we've had several different procedures. Is it needed tonight?
We're going to go through a council member orientation specifically to talk about Board of Adjustment, what the statutory authority is, what the municipal code is on that. Regarding past procedures, I don't have a comment on that. Just a reminder that Board of Adjustment is a quasi judicial proceeding, that's why we usually declare any potential conflicts of interest, any ex parte communications and then oftentimes witnesses will be sworn before they offer public comment, that's not a statutory requirement. We'll be going through all of that. My recommendation would just be to have consistent procedures with what's been used as the past and understanding the, the advice and counsel that you've already received on Board of Adjustment meetings and what your role is and and what your role is and how it's different as a member of the board of adjustment versus as an elected alderperson or mayor.
Very good. For clarification, Eric, does everyone vote on board of adjustment?
On board of adjustment, everyone votes. You know, I don't recall if the city ordinance describes whether the mayor has a vote or not. That's something that I would need to look at. For the time being, I would just suggest, do you have a recollection, mayor, if the mayor has previously voted?
I don't recall.
Okay. I can look that up when I get back to my seat. I'll see if I can find that before.
Thank you.
And then it would be a good idea to just go back to 11.2 and solicit the members if they have any conflicts of interest or any ex parte communications that need to be disclosed.
Does any member of the board of adjustment have any conflicts of interest or have had communique on this topic? Hearing none be declared. We'll continue on. Sir, would you make your comment? Please state your name.
My name is Lance Steinberg. I live at 947 Sherman Street. It's the property right next to their new parking lot behind Harley. My understanding is that it's not zoned for the shop. I would, my concerns, I guess, are where I should go with this is noise. That's Residence. That's where I live, right next to it. And when they wanted to rezone it originally, I had no problem with it because it was just gonna be a parking lot. Step it up, you're gonna put an automotive shop or mechanic shop, noise, tools, stuff going off. I live right next door to it. I'm gonna hear it. So I just wanted to bring that out in front of everybody to please consider, you know, all of the citizens of Sturgis when it comes to that. Could be next to your house, you know? So that's pretty much my statement.
Thank you, Lance.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment or?
Keith Ball, 1008 Main Street. I'm in support of it. I just have always looked forward to having a full-blown Harley-Davidson dealership in Sturgis. I just feel that's so important to the community and to the rally. I just think it's an amazing thing to have happen at last, and I support it.
Thank you, Keith.
You bet.
Is there any further testimony?
Representatives from Black Hills, can you guys kind of give us an explanation what you're gonna do on the properties to the south and to the east of the existing building?
Of course. Like I said, we want to be good neighbors to everybody. We want to bring more business to the town. And right now, for this year, our plan is a couple tents in the parking lot in front of the main dealership. That's where we'll display a larger inventory than we can house now for the ramp up for end of July and first part of August. We have developed the back parking lot. Everyone knows it's been concreted. And long-term use, that is a place that we are looking at that could maybe turn into a service shop. Harley-Davidson Motor Company has given us a two-year bypass on service requirement for a dealership. And it makes sense to be connected to the store and the back of the existing stores where we envision that happening, especially with the existing zoning, and that's something we can keep track of year-round.
The zoning does require it to be serviced from the alley and from the rear, not from the front. That is a condition of this ordinance, of the overlay district is specific about that. And if you remember, I mean, we did have down on the corner of Middle and Main, I mean, for decades, we had an automotive service repair station there. We had NAPA across the street where they rebuilt engines and did repair. I don't ever recall any issues as far as, I mean, these guys, I mean, for the most part are closed by 6:00, 7:00 o'clock at night. I mean, it's not like we're, you know, I would be honest with you, Dave's Auto Repair probably went longer into the night than a normal repair station, so I think that we're, I don't foresee any problems there. And again, if we do have them, we have methods in place to deal with that, so.
Thank you.
And as far as the new property across the street that we purchased, like I said, right now, we need additional parking for staff and then talked a couple different ways where we can have some overflow, whether it's trade appraisals and waiting area for customers that are waiting to purchase their bike that they saw and signed on on the dealership lot is how we envision it this year.
This use-on-review, just for clarification, doesn't cover that property. It ends at Sherman Street is where the overlay district ends.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions on layout or anything for me from the dealership side?
Is there any further questions from the board members? Someone willing to act on this?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
We got a first for approval by Mark, a second by Nick. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, the motion indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carried unanimously. Next on the board of adjustment calendar is consideration for variance for gravel surfacing at 3570 Hanson Avenue, which is in the industrial park.
Correct. Thank you, mayor, again. The applicant is requesting a variance from Title 18 of the Sturgis Municipal Code, which states that all of the lot used for parking of vehicles, storage and display of merchandise, and all driveways used for vehicle ingress and egress shall be constructed of concrete, asphalt, and maintained in a good condition. The applicant is wishing to utilize a gravel surface storage lot. Building, the gravel area is intended only for overflow storage of vehicles and materials within their operations. This property is zoned as general industry, and the property is located in the industrial park. Currently in the industrial park, we have about 12 of these such gravel storage parking lots. So it's something that is pretty common out there. A lot of people, in addition to their hard surface requirement that they have, they just need some overflow parking, whether it be for some of their equipment. For example, we've got West River Electric out there. We've got the most recent ones, a C4 fabrication right across the street. The power company that bought the old Corbon building. Again, they don't want to have these lay-down yards and equipment storage areas that are asphalt, and then you unload tracked vehicles on them and equipment, and it tears them up. So it makes sense to have these gravel surfaced areas. This did go before the Planning and Zoning Commission on June 3 of 2025. Their recommendation was to deny this. There was quite a bit of discussion on that item based on some requirements that they felt, some questions that needed to be answered. They brought up the fact of having boundary surveys of some site, some drainage studies. Those are things that typically would happen once the variance is issued and we go through the actual permitting process. We have that in place to ask for those things. I did go out there after that meeting, just to get a little bit of clarity. Took our city engineering consultant from FOTH with me. He did look at that. I've added that into the council packet. His, you know, if he saw any issues with it, he did not. Said that everything looked appropriate. Again, not saying there won't be some follow-up through the permitting process. There's things that we have to take into account, like the storm water prevention plan, all of those things. But again, those usually happen through the permitting. We probably wouldn't go through with the permitting if the variance is denied. So this truly is the first step, and the question at hand is whether or not to waive that requirement of the hard surfacing. So I think that we've fully addressed that. Again, quite a bit of information in your packet as far as the variance criteria analysis, what the conditions of the approval would mean. I think that this makes sense, again, giving, you know, the direction that we've been given as staff to try and promote and apply all of our ordinances equally and justfully to everybody. I think it would be a hardship to not grant this, so therefore, the staff is recommending approval. I feel comfortable and confident with talking with the owners that we can get to a place where we need to be. They did probably take some steps in error and starting maybe a little bit sooner, kind of that getting the cart before the horse type deal. But it's really, it's no different than if somebody would start to build a house without a building permit. We'd stop them, get them back on track and get the right permits and get everything that's needed. We wouldn't say, well, you didn't do it right. Now you can't build your house. So again, I feel pretty comfortable that we can get back on track where we need to be, and we're not so far along that there's been any detriment on that. So I know the owners are here. I'd be happy to answer any more specific questions if you have any.
Rick, I'd have one that mentions that property owner mailings were completed.
Yes.
What kind of response did we receive?
You know, we didn't, and maybe my failure, the notification says is a notification of the public hearing. So again, I would ask that you question the public and see if there's anybody here to comment on that. This is the time and the place that they should come and give public comment. It shouldn't be a vote. In my mind, it's not a vote on whether or not you submit a mailing back. If you have a concern, you should come and voice it to the people who are gonna make a decision. So I'm not sure where we ever got on that percentage-wise, and then there's certain, you know, if you own more property, more frontage than the other, your vote counts more. I mean, it should really be a one-on-one, and if you have anything to offer up to the council before they make a decision, this is the time and the place to do it.
Sounds like something that we have an ordinance committee working on going forward. But anyway, thank you. I don't have any other questions. Or anybody on council have a, or on the board of adjustment have questions? How about any comments or statements from the gallery? We for sure have the representatives or the owners of the property here. Do you have a statement that you'd like to make, or was it covered adequately?
Camden Doggato, unique performance. I'd like to just state and say that Rick covered everything very well. And yes, we did have the carriage before the horse. We were just trying to be a little bit preventative of weather that was going on and future plans. If this variance did not get approved, that we would have to base it. We were just trying to, I guess, be a little proactive on the situation. We're not here with ill intentions or to cause any issues between us and the city and everything else moving forward. I've been in direct contact with Rick, and any other projects that we wish to pursue, we'll speak with him first and find the appropriate route that we need to cover, so all of our bases are handled.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments out of the audience tonight? Someone willing to act on the?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Yeah, first by Mark, second by Ruth to approve the variance as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That variance has been granted. We'll now exit the board of adjustment, continue with our agenda. Items 12 are public hearings. 12.1 is consideration to approve the amended street closure for the 20th annual Fulton Street Bash.
Good evening, mayor and council. Robin with the city finance office. Tonight, we were hoping you would consider to approve the amended street closure that has been provided by Bruce Bradley for his 20th annual Fulton Street Bash. After it was approved two weeks ago, they discussed that maybe they needed a little more space because of the growth of it. So he has assured me that he will have people staffed kind of at that intersection there because we will not be closing the Fulton Street. The Fulton Street itself will not be closed. So they will have people there just so they can go all the way to Davenport Street. So the through streets would still be open. And Bruce is here if you have any questions.
Okay, so you're talking about extending on to the west?
Yes, one more block.
One more block.
Right now, I believe it's from the alley to Fulton Street, and they would like to go, keep going on Dakota Street to the west to Davenport. Correct, Bruce?
Correct.
Jody or Rick, do you have any problems with this?
No, we don't have any concerns. They've always been a good neighbor, kind of taking care of themselves. That picture's maybe a little bit misleading. The alley going east, I mean, it dead-ends into an alley and doesn't go any further. It's up against the channel, and what they're talking about is expanding to the west across Fulton Street. I guess my only concerns would be, number one, I guess I didn't see, and maybe I missed it, how they intend to close that street off. Again, it was pretty easy when it was that dead end, and there was really two property owners on there. And then making sure that we don't inhibit the, I mean, Fulton Street becomes a very, very busy street. We just need to ask them to ensure that they don't inhibit that traffic or extend out into that street. You know, we're gonna need them to kind of police themselves. Both myself and Jody are busy at that time of the week, and like I said, they've always done a real good job of managing those expectations in the past, and as they grow, we just need to ensure that they continue to do that.
Thank you, Rick. I would imagine that some of the impact might actually be shrunk in that area because of the more vehicles that they'll be able to park in that block. I mean, are you envisioning diagonal parking rather than parallel parking probably with your?
Thank you for asking that question. The purpose of this is to accommodate additional parking, classic car parking during our event. We've become overcrowded in the current area that we have in the street, and it was a conversation with one of the council members that maybe we try this recommendation and see if it works. So from Davenport to Fulton would be that, it would be literally closing the street off and monitoring it from both ends, envisioning three to four cars wide on the street from Davenport to Fulton. We're anticipating an additional 30 cars in that area.
So you'll fill the whole street then?
Yes.
Yeah. So with that, Jody, I mean, we have alleys in that area so that there's no problem with fire, EMS, to those residents?
Yeah, we'll have the alleys open, so there'll be a direct route across the street.
Bruce, this list of residents on that you have, is that all of them that you sent the letters to on that?
Yes. I have spoke with all adjacent property owners, and they are all in favor of this, only to accommodate some of their rentals or residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Thank you for 20 years of event in our community here. Any questions or comments from the council? If not, would somebody be willing to motion this?
I'll motion approve.
I'll second it.
We got a first by Terry, a second by Tony to approve the additional street closure for the 20th annual Fulton Street Bash. Those in favor, the motion indicates by stating yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That carried unanimously. That carried unanimously. Item 12.2, consideration to approve an SEL for the Loud American Roadhouse for the Community Appreciation Picnic on September 3rd.
The Community Appreciation Picnic, which is put on by the Sturgis Area Chamber of Commerce, is September 3rd. And the Loud American has applied to be the, they've applied, used, sorry. They have submitted an applicant special event license to be the malt beverage distributors that evening.
Thank you. These SELs are pretty common for us. We've approved several SELs for Loud American at Music on Main and other events. I think they've done a fine job and everything's in order.
Yep, I have the application and their fees already.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Hearing none. Is someone willing to motion this item?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
First by Alex, a second by Nick to approve the SEL for Loud American Roadhouse for the Community Appreciation Picnic, September 3rd. All those in favor indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried unanimously. Item 12.3, consideration to approve a transfer of a retail malt beverage in South Dakota Farm license from Hollinger Cuny LLC to KWM C-Store LLC, 2217 Junction Avenue. That's a quick mark.
Yes.
Me. Oh, excuse me. Not you.
We do have a completed application for the transfer of that malt beverage license from Hollinger Cuny LLC. And we also have the $75 transfer fee. We don't anticipate any issues with the state. We already have the renewals in place. We're just waiting to get the final renewals back. So her license would go through June 30th of 2026.
So new owners of the property?
Yes. Yes. I've worked with them since, while my first rally I worked with, this, the guy I'm buying it from owned several gas stations and I worked with the 50th rally for him in Spearfish, but that gas station is now closed. And I worked with the gas station here. I do all the accounting for it and I know a lot about it.
Sounds like it.
And I've lost my voice, I think, because I've had my four grandkids for like three weeks. And they're like 11 and down, four boys. That must be what's going on. So.
Any questions or comments from council? This transfer?
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Yeah, first by Nick, a second by Mark to approve the malt beverage license transfer. All those in favor indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried unanimously.
Thanks.
Good luck. Thank you for investing in our community.
Thank you. I hope the rally is good.
Yeah, us too. Item 13.2 is, did we jump? 12.4. I can't count. Consideration to approve an SEL for the Knuckle Saloon for Music on Main, the 2nd of July, the 30th of July, and the 27th of August. Three SEL licenses for the Knuckle Saloon.
This is for Music on Main and yeah, it's pretty basic. They've done it before in the past. And they have three licenses, which are applications that I have received and I do have their monies for that already. Yes.
Thank you, Robin. Any questions or comments from council?
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
We got a first by Mark, a second by Terry to approve the SEL for those three dates for the Knuckle Music on Main event. Those in favor, the motion indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Now we'll turn the page to reports. 13.1, consideration to approve the three-mile area policy agreement with Meade County. Rick, are you able to brief us on the three-mile jurisdiction?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. As you guys are aware, South Dakota Codified Law 11626 gives the municipalities the ability to elect to approve subdivision plats outside of their corporate limits up to three miles, as long as the land does not lie within another municipality. Through the course of working with this, the city and the county have decided or discovered that it's in the best interest of the city and the county to have a three-mile agreement. Basically, what that three-mile agreement does is it designates two different zones, Zone 1 and a Zone 2. Everything in Zone 1 runs through the city planning and zoning through all of our committees. We issue all of the permits on it. Everything in Zone 2 runs through the county. The reason that we do that is to establish a procedure to implement proper growth. We're looking at things that are directly around our municipalities that we understand or that have a high likelihood of being annexed in so that we can ensure roads line up, that sewer mains and water mains and extensions happen, just knowing that those things are probably going to happen. We also, within that three miles, we have areas, for example, like Bloxburg, that, I mean, it would be a stretch to try and get city services out there. So again, that probably makes more sense for that to lie within that county jurisdiction on that. And when we talk about plating, we talk about the design standards as well. Everything within that Area 1 is designed to city standards, which means that we're looking at curb and gutter, we're looking at sidewalks, we're looking at storm sewer, we're looking at extension of our mains, things of that nature. In the Area 2, again, that wouldn't really make any sense. So we've had this in place for quite a while, over a decade for sure. And from time to time, we need to revisit it. And what brought this revisit around or this change in the, this amendment in the three-mile policy was when we excluded the property up on the top of the hill, up of Sly Hill, above the football fields. We de-annexed that for all intensive purposes and put that back into the county. Well, in doing that, we did that, or the council did that based on the pretense that we couldn't really provide services to it. And it didn't make any sense for that subdivision up there to have curb and gutter, to have sidewalks and have all of these things that really lead to nowhere. So with that, we decided to put that area, that de-annexed area up there, back in, change it, put it back into the three-mile agreement and put that underneath of the county jurisdiction. So that really, in a nutshell, is the only change from what we have currently in place to what this amendment will show. This did go before the county planning and zoning and the county commissioners, and they have authorized it. Now, it did go to our planning and zoning and they recommended approval. And now the final step is just for you guys to authorize that.
Thank you, Rick. Anybody have any questions about this amendment to the three-mile agreement with Meade County? Someone willing to motion approval?
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Got a first by Jim, a second by Alex to approve this amendment to the three-mile jurisdiction agreement with Meade County. Those in favor, the motion indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried unanimously. 13.2, consideration to approve Resolution 202528 approving final plat of Park Lot 1 and Wootle Field Lot of Sly Hill Edition. This is the football field.
Correct. We've been working on this going on two years now, for sure. So some of this, some of you've heard about it. Most of you probably have heard about it in one form or another, even the new council. Probably one of the more interesting things that came to light recently is we were, through some staffing changes at the game fishing parks, we were led to believe that this particular property had an encumbrance on it that was designated by the Land, Water, and Conservation Fund. What that is, is that's a piece that when we put the lights in at the soccer field or we put lights in up at Strong Field, we got some grant money, some federal grant monies from the National Park Service. As part of a condition for those grants are that we enroll properties or a certain amount of property into the LWCF program, which basically just is an encumbrance on it and protects that it's going to always be for parks and recreation and for open and public use. A lot of times back in the, you know, pretty much from the 90s on back, those records were kept fairly loosely. Anymore now, when one of those grants is given, there's actually an encumbrance and attached to the deed. Back then, it wasn't necessarily handled that way. So very easy to, for interpretation on what's enrolled and what's not enrolled. Like I said, we had some staff turnover and we questioned them on this property. Again, actually, we asked them if we could just transfer the encumbrance with the plat to the school because again, it was going to stay as the same designated use. And we really didn't want to necessarily remove that encumbrance. We just wanted to transfer the property to the school for the same use. And in asking that question, the new staff said, well, we don't believe it's got this encumbrance on it. And they actually verified it with the National Park Service in Washington, DC. They came up with the same conclusion that that particular piece of property was not encumbered and said, go ahead and do your transfer. We don't have any requirements on it. So that's really what pushed this back onto the plate and pushed it forward. So we're just carrying through with that. I don't believe it was this current council, but several members of the current council did sign a letter of intent with the Meade 46-1 School District last year on the sale of this property. It was in agreement. At the same time, we brought forward a similar letter of intent for the fairgrounds. That one did not pass, but this one did. So we're just finally being able to this by approving this final plat and filing it will give us the ability to, the next action item that will be coming in subsequent council meetings will be the actual purchase agreement of this property with the Meade 46-1. But in order to do that and move forward, we have to have the plat finalized, have the resolution signed and file the plat at the Meade County Register of Deeds.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions from council?
I move to approve.
Well, that was quick, Jim. First by Jim to approve.
Second.
Second by Mark to approve the plat of the Wootle Football Field. Those in favor indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carried unanimously. 13.3 is consideration of Resolution 202529 authorizing closure of streets for the 85th Annual Sturgis Motorcycle Rally.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is something that we do every year. This is what gives us the authority to close the streets, to set up the temporary traffic signals, all of the pieces maintained within the public right of way. We only parking zones, the designated fire lanes, traffic control devices, as well as the roads that we remain open to through traffic. What this does is it improves pedestrian safety in these high-traffic areas. It provides space for the vendor boost, emergency response access, reduces congestion by allowing the through traffic in critical rally zones, and really is a planned coordination with emergency services and public safety to ensure that the appropriate amount of public access is maintained for first responders. So this is something that we've been doing for quite a while. This is the same resolution that we did last year. It's the same closures. There is a map, if you want, yeah, that's a real high level, kind of shows exactly what streets are closed, which ones are fire lanes, where the temporary traffic control devices are, where the motorcycle only parking is. This resolution that's presented to you today is the same as what we did last year with the exception of, we did have a closure on Sixth Street for one day for a bike show that has been removed, does not, my understanding is we are not doing, or the applicants of that property are not doing that road closure this year. Everything else is the same. What is up for discussion, last year, as mentioned before, we did keep this closure in place to Monday at 2:00 AM. So that would be up for discussion by the council tonight to decide if they want this resolution to go through Monday at 2:00 AM or Sunday at 2:00 AM, which the Sunday at 2:00 AM really is a Saturday night tear down. The Monday at 2:00 AM is, would be a Sunday night or early Monday morning tear down. Otherwise, everything would remain the same as what we have for the last couple of decades that I know anyways.
The reason for the two days was relative to that motorcycle race that we had on Sunday last year, which may not be held this year?
Correct.
Any other comments from council? About comments from members of the public on the street closure resolution for the 85th Motorcycle Rally? No comments from the public?
Whether it's going to be Saturday or Sunday or Monday, we have to put that in the motion, right?
We would make that in addition to the motion, yeah.
I have the resolutions either way. So all you have to do is approve the appropriate resolution and
They have different numbers?
No, they're the same number. They're not a resolution until they're executed. They're a draft.
Okay. So we would define it as Sunday closure or not, I guess? Someone willing to motion the street closure for the 85th Motorcycle Rally?
I would move to include that Sunday morning closure.
Approve the resolution with the inclusion of Sunday being a
Monday at 2:00. The options are Monday at 2:00 AM or Sunday at 2:00 AM.
Sunday is what I would
Which means that it would open Saturday night.
The street would open Saturday night at 2:00.
At 2:00 AM Sunday morning, we would have it open.
And again, the reason we did that last year was because of the race, which is not going to be held.
Correct.
Okay, so saying it Saturday night, Sunday morning at 2:00 would be the correct way for this year. That was my intention.
We got a first by Jim to remove the street closure at 2:00 AM Sunday morning.
I'll second that.
And a second by Terry. Is any further discussion?
I'll abstain just for the potential perceived conflict of it being related to the race.
Okay.
Just making that comment.
Do we have any comments from the audience here?
I would just make this comment, and I've lobbied for a while now, that the Sunday should be, the street should stay closed on Sunday. The reason behind that is it's actually been an official day, airtime. And the largest, I guess the biggest reason behind it is, it is, as an official day, if you're a tourist that's trying to decide when you're going to come enjoy this event, it's an easy question to answer, which weekend are you going to come? Because you're going to go over a weekend in order to enjoy the, you know, the days you typically would have off from work. You're obviously not going to come that second weekend. And you know, one way that I generally put it for people, you know, we've all been, you know, somewhere in a restaurant or a pub and they come around and start throwing up the chairs around you as you are sitting there. And the message is clear. It's time to go. I don't know how we are ever going to, as the, as rally kind of wane and sales have slipped over the years, I don't know how we're ever going to build that back if we don't keep the streets closed on Sunday and embrace that weekend as an official weekend, which I guess it's been designated since the beginning. So. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else have a comment on the motion?
Keith Ball again. I would consider, since it's going to be an 85th, that we extend it for one more year. Because it could be a much larger rally and so that could have a serious impact. My other question is regarding the AFT. Sort of never got to the bottom of that, you know. We thought we were going to get real transparency on that. Does the city owe those guys money? What's going on with that?
Was in a complete agenda. Was in a complete agenda package, you know, at last meeting, and every bit of the information that we have, fully transparent is included in that.
In there?
So, on the item of street closure this year, your recommendation is, is that we continue the closure through Sunday.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Why wouldn't you want it closed on Sunday? What's the advantage to not keeping it closed?
Well, I think what's happened is, a lot of vendors are leaving on Sunday, and they're trying, they're trying to get out and use the streets. So, I mean, there has been some of that. Mark is right, it's an official day of the rally, but we have moved, removed the barricades and street closures, except for last year. Is there any further discussion?
Well, Mayor, my, when I made the motion, and that, Rick, as I understood, it's been several, I say several years, in the six or seven that I've been back in Sturgis, it has closed on Sunday, is that correct?
We, we traditionally, last year was the first year that we kept it closed on, all day on Sunday. So we, we normally, Sunday morning at 2:00 AM or Saturday night when the bars close, we would tear down and remove. Everything would be opened up to normal traffic on, on Sunday. Last year, we did that, we pushed it a day and did that on what we would call Sunday night or Monday early morning. So we're prepared for, for either. We, I mean, we're already set up, so far as public works, it's not an issue, probably has the bigger impact on Jody because his guys all leave Saturday night, or, or the majority of them traditionally, so he would have to make those, those arrangements to, you know, again, we can't drive a patrol car down there, so if the roads are closed, but that, that's probably the, the biggest consideration.
Yeah, as Rick said, our staff, the majority of them leave at 2:00 AM Saturday night, Sunday morning. With the fact that we've been socializing and talking this for the last few months with potential, I've come up and been working some, trying to be proactive, working some backup plan that'll have some additional coverage down there. It won't be like a full-blown rally, but there'll be some coverage, kind of like last year.
Thank you.
So I would agree, not to interrupt you, sorry, Jim, but I'm with Rick either way. I have a plan in place to make either way successful.
We've got a motion by Jim, a second by Terry to approve the resolution with a 2:00, 2:00 AM Sunday morning removal of the street closure. Any further discussion?
I feel like we should recognize the last day of the rally, and we'd be closed. That's my comment.
Well, procedurally, not to lead, but there, I mean, amended motion can be made if there's a second. And of course, we can vote on this, and if it fails, another motion can be made, so. Are you good with me calling the vote?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm going to go ahead and call the vote, just because we'll go ahead and do a roll call because I want to count right this time. And I'm going to start with Nick.
No.
Jim?
And this is the one to close it on Sunday morning?
Close it at Sunday morning.
I would vote yes.
Terry? Alex?
No.
Tony?
No.
Ruth?
I'm standing.
Yes, you are.
I'm standing.
Yes.
And Mark is a yes. So we are tied. And in that case, I can vote. Myself, I'd like to ask the question before we go, is, does 2:00 AM, I mean, could we, could we remove the closure at like 6:00 PM on Sunday? Does that fit?
It'd be pretty tough.
It'd be pretty tough. It wouldn't, it wouldn't help.
Because at 6:00, would you say 6:00 AM?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, yeah, I mean, because you're, you're, the downtown's going to be full. I mean, we're trying to get in there with loaders and move the photo tower and big trailers with the, I mean, that, that would be dangerous. I, I wouldn't promote that. I mean, we do it at 2:00 AM because that's when the bars close, that's for the most part, the, the streets become ours. I mean, everybody has left and, and it's just the, the most safe time to do it.
All right. Don't need to prolong the, the discussion. We're in the middle of the vote. Chief, you had a comment?
If I can interject, just for a minute, I think it'd be a good opportunity if we did keep this closed for Sunday. We need to try to get some PSAs out for our vendors. We do have a history of our vendors leaving. They start Friday night, there's a mass exodus Saturday night. If the streets are going to be closed on Sunday, there's more that try to leave on Sunday, would be kind of highly encourage them to try to stay and take advantage of our street closure. Hopefully, maybe they can make some more money as well, but that'll be a nasty little fight that we have to deal with if we have the road closure and a bunch of vendors trying to leave.
I forget, the, the ones that we talked to when they're down there tearing up when we're trying to, to clean up, they're, they're trying to hit another event. They're going somewhere, so I, I, I mean, they're, they're likely whether we do down anyways, because they, they have so many days to get to the next venue.
Well, given this is our 85th Motorcycle Rally, it is an official day, I'm going to vote yes on this closure for Sunday.
Thank you.
Continues to
So we are
Close
You said no?
You said yes.
No.
Yeah, I meant no, sorry.
Did you count it right?
I counted right, but I voted no, yeah. So we don't, we don't have a closure.
So you are voting no.
I voted no, yeah, so
We have to carry, we have to do another motion.
We have to do another motion now. And Ruth, can you describe your conflict?
Because my company has a contract with AMA Pro Racing for marketing and communication services, and the initial motion was to change the street closure to Sunday at 2:00 AM because we are not hosting the race, and so I didn't want any sort of, someone to say, oh, Ruth, approve the street race being canceled because she voted on the street closure that changed it to anything like that, so I'm not touching it.
Someone willing to make another motion or the same motion?
Motion to keep it open until Monday at 2:00 AM for the 85th Sturgis Rally.
Okay, we got a first by Alex for Monday at 2:00 AM.
A second.
A second by Nick for Monday at 2:00 AM. I think we've discussed this probably enough, let's just go straight to the vote. Those in favor of the motion, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and roll call it again, just because I want to count. This time, Mark.
Yes.
Can you clarify it one more time?
Monday at 2:00 AM, the street, the streets will open.
Sunday, they'll still remain closed.
Mark was a yes, Ruth is abstaining.
I'll abstain.
Tony?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Terry?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
All right, with one extension, we've got six yes votes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 13.4 is consideration to approve Resolution 2025-30, open container for the 2025 Motorcycle
The open container has, we didn't change anything this year. I checked with the chief, and they're going to do the exact same footprint as last year. So Resolution 25, 2025-30 would start the open containers at 10:00 AM on August 1st. It would conclude every day at 2:00 AM, and the last evening would be August 11th. That would also be Monday morning at 2:00 AM. So we haven't changed anything. We would sell the cups. You know, the open container has always included the event cups, so they would have to be purchased and used anytime they're out on the street. They can only have beer and wine, strictly malt beverage, and they have to stay within designated map for the footprint, which is exactly the same as last year.
Thank you, Robin. Chief, the same, same enforcement is okay by you? Chief indicated yes.
Any questions or comments from council?
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
Then a first by Mark, a second by Tony to approve the 20, Resolution 2025-30, open container for the 2025 Sturgis Motorcycle Rally. Any further discussion? Those in favor indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carried unanimously. 13-5, consideration to approve professional service agreement with Upper Deck Architects for the design bidding and limited construction administrative services on the community center roof and city hall membrane roof replacement projects. These are insurance projects due to weather damage. Correct, Rick?
Yep. Good job, Mayor. Do you want me to answer any questions? This is basically, felt that this was probably outside of our expertise, and, and we did have an insurance claim on both of these roofs that, that aren't a total, complete tear-off and repair, they're only partial. Again, kind of complicates it a little bit. Figured that we needed to get some professional services to help us put those bid documents together so that we can fully capture what all of that work is and make sure that we get the best and adequate bids when we do put this out. I did check with our insurance coverage, and this fee, this design fee is covered under our policy, so the insurance should cover it. We did get with, with Upper Deck, Jerry Eisenbrot, who comes well-respected, we've used him before. Their lump sum fee for these services are $37,673. They'll put together and handle all of the bidding documents, do the bid opening, do the bid tab to make sure that we've got good bids, and then they will do some limited construction administration, which on a roof repair, there's probably not a whole lot. Once we turn the contractor loose, they're going to do what they need to do and repair it. Mainly would be as if, if they take up the membrane and something is, is uncovered that was unknown, how, how we go about handling that.
Thank you, Rick. And of note, I think we received nearly $200,000 worth of insurance payment on this.
That, that, on that loss recap that's in the council packet, all of that information is in there, yes.
Good. Any questions from council? Someone willing to motion?
Motion to approve.
A second.
Yeah, first by Alex, a second by Mark to approve the professional service agreement with Upper Deck Architects for the roof on the community center and city hall. Those in favor indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Carried unanimously.
Thank you.
13-6 is consideration to approve settlement agreement in Bone versus Bueno.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. You've all been briefed in executive session about the status of this pending litigation. I've also prepared a report for you that's in the council packet, asking for your approval and authorization for the mayor to sign the release of claims agreement that will resolve this litigation that's been going on since 2021. Happy to answer any questions that I can in public session. If there's anything appropriate for executive session, we can adjourn into executive session to discuss it and then come back into open session to approve the agreement. But if there are any specific questions, happy to answer them. I've been in communication with the city's legal counsel that's been retained by the city's insurance company about this matter. They're requesting approval and authorization to sign this agreement.
Thank you, Eric. Your agenda report indicates the timeline and process that we've worked through this and, and, you know, the decisions that were made that along the way. Does anybody have a comment or a question from council? Myself, I'm truly, truly happy that we're finding resolution on this. You know, I'm sad that this is the path that it, that it took, and I appreciate everyone's hard work on this. Is there someone willing to make a motion?
I move to approve.
A second.
We got a first by Nick, a second by Mark to approve the settlement agreement on the Bone versus Bueno lawsuit. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor, you said resolution, that's from our standpoint.
Did I say resolution?
I think you
Let me get back to the agenda here.
It was resolved, or at least you felt that we've come to a resolu, or
Well, we're just approving the settlement agreement, so it's not a resolution.
So I, this is, have we, we haven't agreed with the, with the plaintiffs?
I guess I'm not sure I understand the question.
Is this agreement, is this agreement being approved by the people that are suing
us? My understanding is that this is an agreement that's been reached and agreed to by council for both the city and all of the plaintiffs in this action, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? We've got a motion and a second. Call for the vote? Those in favor, the motion indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. 13.7 is consideration to approve the 2025 Black Hills Rally in Gold retail licensing agreement. Lance Shear?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you. Yes, this is a one-year renewal of a previous licensee for a portion of the heritage mark. Staff's recommendation is to approve.
Any questions from council, comments? It's an extension of this, the agreement that we had last year.
That's correct.
Someone willing to motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
A first by Mark, a second by Tony to approve the Black Hills Rally in Gold retail licensing agreement for 2025. Those in favor, the motion indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carried unanimously as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. 13.7, consideration to approve the 2025 Letter of Engagement for Talent Buyer with Monument Talent LLC.
Yes, Monument Talent would be our booking agent for the 10-day rally period. For rally point, they would arrange and book the musical acts for us during the rally.
I don't recall, have we used this firm before?
We have.
Does anyone have any questions? No questions? Someone willing to motion?
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
We got a first by Terry, a second by Nick to approve the Letter of Engagement for Monument Talent. Those in favor, the motion indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion is carried.
Thank you.
Unanimously. Eric, do we have a need for executive session? I have no, no knowledge of any need for executive session, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
Second.
We got a first by Tony, a second by Alex to adjourn. As far as discussion, I want to point out that Counselor Mark Chaplin made us a nice brand-new gavel.
I hope you never have to use it.
Well, I'm going to use it right now.
Don't break it.
Meaning, or wait a minute, we got to vote, yeah. Those in favor of adjournment indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no.